Good evening. I would like to welcome everyone to the proceedings of the Grand Rapids Public Schools Board of Education. It is Monday, March 19. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Grant, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Dr. Flores?
Yeah.
Ms. Grant here. Ms. Lewis?
Present.
Reverend Mathias?
Present.
Mr. Ross?
Present.
Ms. Shaki is excused. Ms. Slade?
Present.
Dr. Baker?
Here.
And President Faub.
Present. Do I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
So move.
Support for that?
Support.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you. Next on our agenda are the celebrations.
Thank you. Dr. Faub and members of the board, I'd like to ask Laura Lamore to come forward, please.
Good evening. Superintendent Weather O'Neal, President Faub, members of the board. It is my pleasure to be seated here with you this evening. Beside me, we have Kent Riddle, the CEO for Mary Freebed, and we have his assistant, Mary Burgess. We also have behind us Laura Ochoa, the program administrator for the Community Transition Campus, and one of our awesome staff members, Janine Golden. We're here tonight because we have an extraordinary partnership and relationship with Mary Freebed. It's a part of the extension of our Community Transition Campus, and Mary Freebed has been one of those partners that you really just dream about. They heard about the things that we were doing, we connected with them early, and they came back around to us and said, "We now have space." And not only do we have space, we have great space, and you would be an asset to our community. So with that, what I'd like to do is to point your attention to some slides that we have behind us, and then I'll let Kent and Amy say a few words about the relationship with their organization. And again, just want to thank you for the opportunity for us to bring them to you and celebrate this terrific partnership, getting our young adults into the community. So you guys want to talk?
Can you go through the slides?
Yeah.
So, on behalf of Mary Freebed, we are a community organization, as you know, not-for-profit. That means we are owned by no one and owned by everybody in the community, and 127 years old this year, and we are delighted with this relationship. In fact, Amy and I personally would say we're delighted because we know all the kids. We know them by name, they know us by name. When we run into them in the hallways, we call them out, they call us out. So it is a personal relationship, but many of my leadership staff and these kids, they are not just cleaning our garage and cleaning space at Mary Freebed, but they are actually finding meds that are out of date and other things that need to be done. And so we've found a very mutually beneficial relationship. They have a classroom at Mary Freebed, and we've celebrated together. And so we often get together, and you can see this is a picture of some of my chief financial officer, chief medical officer, there's Amy and I, head of facilities, and a bunch of the kids there, you can see Janine there. So just, I want you to know how we feel. We're lifted by this relationship. This is, I can't, it's too dark to see what that is. Oh, Matt?
That was I think our first celebration of the year.
Is that Matt and I?
Yes.
Yeah, see, Matt's face is dark, but, so Matt, who's sitting in the audience, and I, this was a celebration that the kids threw for us. And I was so amazed, the fact that they were thanking us for the relationship when they were doing all this good work for Mary Freebed, that we in turn threw one for them just recently, what, a month ago or so? Yeah. This is Sandy Gilman, the head of our custodial staff and group of the kids. We've given them all T-shirts, actually, I think they've had a couple now. They have some orange T-shirts, too. My tie isn't the only thing that's orange, this is Mary Freebed's color of orange and green. Yeah, so there they are, going through med storage to find what medications are out of date. And they have done a great job of that, and we measure it with them. It's a group of them, not all of them, but there's Nick on the right, Sam, Mary. There's Mary. So I have two paintings in my office that Mary painted, there they are. They sit in my office, and I still have Nick W. I don't recall Nick's last name, but W, because there's two Nicks on the team, and Nick W's poster of, it's wonderful, it's of the city of Grand Rapids, hangs in my office as well. So anybody that comes to my office for a meeting, I tell them about this program and about these kids. So I want you to just know how proud we are of them and how proud we are of our relationship with them. We're very thankful to you all for allowing us to do this.
Pardon my ignorance, but can you give me a little bit bigger picture about the program and partnership?
Absolutely. The Community Transition Campus serves our 18 to 26-year-olds across the greater Kent County area. We have about 250 young adults, and we have now seven sites, and Mary Freebed is one of the newest community sites, and we just worked out that arrangement in the fall of this year. Lots of recruiting for sites goes on over the summers and throughout the course of the year by our teachers. Janine was actually the one who started the relationship and the dialogue, so it truly takes a village. Everybody's always looking for the best opportunity to have young people engaged in the community in a meaningful, dignified way that is going to grow their skills, their enthusiasm for learning and employment and community involvement, and this is one of those environments. So we have programming at Straight School, we have programming at the Mayfield site, and we have programming at First Place, North Kent, GVSU, Cook Center for the Arts, and Mary Freebed.
Great.
It's a very community-embedded type of programming that gets our young adults where they're going to be next, which is in the community.
Okay, thanks for coming.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Our pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Faub and members of the board, I'd like to ask Ken Clownparents to come forward.
West Michigan Environmental Action Council has announced their 2018 Women in the Environment Hidden Heroin Awards. They give three awards, a woman of vision, a woman of hope, and the 2018 Woman of Inspiration is awarded to Kristin Trevillian.
Nice job.
This is their definition, I'll read it till I get it accurate. This award honors a woman at the forefront of the current environmental movement. As a contemporary environmental leader, Kristin also brings seasoned environmental experience and motivation to those around her, embodying inspiration through environment advocacy and justice efforts. Kristin's been with us, she's in her fourth year now. She came through U.S. Green Building Council, her background is from Alma College in Political and Environmental Science and Indiana University in Energy Policy. Kristin's been a great addition to our team, and we really appreciate her work.
Very nice. Great.
I'll give a shout-out for former board member, Dr. Randall.
That's right. That's right. Awesome.
Thanks, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thanks for your leadership.
Thank you.
That's awesome. Dr. Randall, please.
Yes.
So, next on the agenda is the report of our student reps. Mr. Centeno?
Hey, guys, nice to see you all again. I wanted to talk about the robotics team, 904. They went up to Esconaba this weekend and they took first place.
Oh, nice job.
It's really cool. Wow. They're looking at maybe going to nationals, so that's really cool. DECA was also the last couple of weeks, and I actually medaled this year at state, so it was really cool. I'm one of the state finalists, so that was really cool. Crossing my fingers to maybe go to nationals. It's in Atlanta this year, so that's really cool. And then today, Mr. Sanders took a handful of students to a Nikon luncheon. It was really cool. Jim Hackett was the former CEO of Seal Case, and now he's the CEO of Ford. He was talking about, you know, how the car industry is going to change in the future. It was really, really cool, and that's what I got for you guys. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Anti?
So, hundreds of students from GRPS and neighboring schools participated in the Caesar Chavez March, which was really good. And our March 17th Union High School kicked off Starry Night Dance, and from what I heard from the students, it was an awesome time. And one more reminder, Kids Speak, theme is this year is immigration. The subtitle is "Tearing Down the Walls." It's April 28th, so kids K through 12th grade can be able to write an essay and participate in that. And then on a personal note, I ended up breaking the record, 246 immersmanship.
Wow, good job. Nice. Thank you, both of you. Do we have public comment for board agenda items?
We do not.
All right. Secretary's report?
All right. Secretary's report for March 19th. The Finance Committee is scheduled for Monday, March 26th, at 4:00 p.m. in the auditorium. The Academic Achievement Committee is moved, that meeting is moved to Tuesday, March 27th, at 9:00 a.m. in the auditorium. And the Ad hoc Policy Committee meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, March 28th, at 8:00 a.m. in Room 101. Superintendent Neal announces listening tour as part of the Transformation Plan update. Grand Rapids Public Schools Superintendent Teresa Weather O'Neal is embarking on a listening tour for the next phase of the Transformation Plan. Students, parents, staff, and community members are invited to attend and provide their feedback. This tour will be at a few different locations. Tuesday, March 20th, from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m., will be located at Aberdeen School, which is 928 Aberdeen Street. Wednesday, March 21st, from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m., it is at Union High School, 1800 Tremont Northwest. District employees, parents, students, volunteers, and community members who are not able to attend one of the listening tour dates are encouraged to provide their feedback and suggestions by completing the Transformation Plan, listening to a survey that is posted on the district's website. There's also a GRPS Human Resources Job Fair that is held on Saturday, March 24th, at Alger Middle School, located at 921 Alger, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. There are various position opportunities to apply for. Interested individuals are asked to bring a resume with them. Human Resources also asks that individuals register online at GRPS.org under the Careers tab.
Thank you. We have no committee chair updates. Superintendent's report?
Dr. Faub, I would like to ask John Helmholt to come forward to discuss our process of where we are with the Promise Zone.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. President Faub, members of the board, Superintendent's ask for, just to provide an update on our Promise Zone application. Just last week, we did hear back from the Michigan Department of Treasury. They did confirm that we are on the waiting list. So there, just a quick background, there was originally 10 Promise Zones that were created. The law was expanded back last November to include five new. So there are 10 existing Promise Zones. There were four that were on the waiting list to begin with, and then our friends up in Muskegon County area were a little ahead of us, so we are on the waiting list. We do know of the, those that are, that were on the waiting list, several of them didn't even realize they were on the waiting list still. So the process from Treasury is if one of those chooses to dissolve, or they choose to withdraw their application, those that have not gone through the Promise Zone and finalized it, they could say, "No, we're no longer interested," which would open up a spot for us. We're first in line, Treasury knows we're eager, and at this point, we are looking for Treasury to tell us how they're going to be contacting these other districts that were on the waiting list, that now would be eligible for a Promise Zone designation. We would need to know if they're going to accept that. And so really, right now, we're in hurry-up-and-wait mode. As soon as we get additional directive from Treasury, we'll know what our options may be, which may include petitioning the legislature for a legislative amendment that might create even more slots. Our hope is one of those would give up the, one of those designations, they may not pursue their application, that would open up a slot for us.
Is there a deadline for the other districts that are on there?
There, we're, not only do we not know if there's a deadline, we don't know what the process is for, how is Treasury going to be contacting them? Will they say you have 30 days to resubmit your application? We're not quite sure, and the law does not specify that. So this is a little bit of that uncharted territory where there may need to be some type of an administrative procedure ruling, ruling from the AG's office, but we'll know more probably in the next 30 days.
Questions for John? Great, thanks for the update.
Thank you.
We have a couple of action items. First is the, to vote on, the superintendent evaluation that we completed last week, was that last week?
Yes.
As a group? Do I have a motion for approval of the superintendent evaluation?
To move.
Support.
Any deliberations, concerns, discussions? All right, take the vote.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant, yes. Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shaki is excused. Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
And President Faub?
Yes. All right. Next, we have purchasing agenda. Do I have a motion for approval of the purchasing agenda?
So move.
Support.
Any discussions, concerns? Take the vote.
All right. Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant, yes. Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shaki is excused. Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
And President Faub?
Yes. Do I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
So move.
Support.
They asleep.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant, yes. Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Shaki is excused. Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
President Faub?
Yes. We have no discussion items. I believe we have some public comment for non-agenda items?
Yes.
Sorry.
It's all right. Take your time.
If the whole is...
Go ahead.
All right. If there is anyone present that is interested in giving public comment, we have two public comment sections on our agenda. We are now at the non-agenda items, and if there's a matter that you would like to speak on, you will need to fill out the public comment card located at the tables at the entry points. Please read through the policy listed there, and the protocol is on the reverse side of the card. You can submit your card to the public safety officer or the board assistant. Individuals will be called to speak, called to the speaker table to address the board during the subsequent public comment topic. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person. You will need to state your full name before providing the comment. We will then start the timer at the beginning of your comment and provide you with a one-minute notice by flagging a red card indicating that one minute remains. You will need to complete your comment time upon being notified that three minutes have passed. Board members do not respond to public comment. Concerns will be brought to the attention of appropriate staff. We value your input and thank you for sharing with us.
Great, so it looks like we have a stack, so if you want to call three or four folks down?
Okay. First, we have Michael Walton. Next, I'll call Lilly Schulting and Jack Prince.
Mr. Walton, if you want to begin?
Thank you. Good evening. I haven't met all of you, I've met some of you. For those of you that I haven't met, my name is Mike Walton. I am a former tutor and was for a couple of years through the Schools of Hope program, and that's the reason that I'm here tonight. I want to talk to you about that program and hopefully continuing it. There was a common goal, as has been stated by the superintendent in several meetings that I've seen, or several discussions that I've seen this year, that literacy is a touch tone for both the board and the superintendent, as well as comprehension. The Schools of Hope was, I think, the premier reading and comprehension program that there was in West Michigan. It was a tremendous program. It was discontinued by the Schools of Hope almost a year ago, March 24th of 2017. At that time, everyone knew that there was a new state mandated third-grade requirement for reading, and at that time, when I was still a tutor, I'm no longer a tutor because the program's gone, I contacted John Helmholt, and he and I had several conversations about this process. On March 27th, I was informed that the Grand Rapids Public School System was conducting its own literacy program evaluation through the Literacy Center. In April, I was informed that the Literacy Center was going to provide an academic team, was going to be on the academic team meeting within two weeks. That did not occur. On the 26th of April of last year, I was told that most definitely that was going to happen at the next meeting. That did not occur. On May 15th, I asked for a firm date on when the academic committee was going to, academic team, rather, was going to meet, and hopefully, that was at that point going to be before the beginning of the rest of the school year, because it couldn't be done by the end of that current school year. On the 13th, I got back and I received a copy of the literacy report which the Learning Center had done. I had phoned conversations with a number of people at the Grand Rapids Public School System, asking about what the status was, and eventually, those conversations only provided me with the information that everyone wanted to preserve the mentoring project. I did an enormous amount of research since March of last year and now, up even to today. The number of schools that were involved, of Schools of Hope, were 15 schools. There were in excess of 250 tutors that were involved in that program, 250 at 15 schools. Each one of those people had a background search, which they had passed, they had a badge for school entry, and many of them, including myself, worked with multiple students. I tutored four students at two different schools, four days a week. So for the 250 tutors, we are talking about something in the neighborhood of between 250 and 1,000 students that have now essentially lost their tutors. After years of contact in some instances, after great friendships being developed, after providing a constant for these students, that was all gone.
Mr. Walton, your time is up, if you want to make a concluding comment.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
Well, I can tell you that I can write to all of you and send you some information, but my research shows that there is virtually no cost to the Grand Rapids Public School System for this project, and I'll tell you how that's done, but I'll send that in the form of a letter. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Schulting?
Yes. Hi, President Faub and Superintendent Neal and members of the board. I'm Lilly Schulting, and I'm here as the founder and president of the Disability A-Team. And we are here because we still have 847 special education teachers and staff who have signed the Michigan Education Association's petition for the removal of Special Education Director Laura Lamore. And this is, again, the overwhelming majority of the special education teacher and staff at GRPS, and they have cast a vote of no confidence. Their vote cannot be in vain. The 847 brave special education teachers and staff deserve an answer from you, the Board of Education, to whom the petition was addressed. Since our hearts are with the 847 brave teachers and staff, our Disability A-Team reiterates that all of us need an answer from you, the Board, by March 23rd at 5:00 p.m. Because we truly care about the position of the overwhelming majority of the special education teachers and staff. Our team will do the right thing, and we will go forward with our plan of action. Again, why is the position of 847 special education teachers and staff so important? They are the overwhelming majority. They are the backbone of the Special Education Department. They work very hard with challenging pay compared to the hard work that they do. They became special education teachers for the love of helping children with disabilities. And they, so, and their motive is a good motive. So any question about a smear or the MEA, I mean, calling the MEA a smear, does it make any sense to me? I think they're a credible union, they've been around for a long time. So this is how important this petition is. It should not be dismissed, and it should not be in vain. And they understand the challenges very well. It's not because teachers don't want changes, they just don't want bad changes. And you don't, this isn't rocket science, you don't have to be a rocket scientist to know that closing KVO as one example, a transition school relocating its students to a small vacant elementary school is an illogical, torturous, and financially bad idea. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Prince?
Good evening, esteemed board members. My name is Jack Prince. I am a retired school teacher. I taught at this school district for 10 years, two other high schools, and two universities. I am here by invitation to this A-Team group. You know, here we are after, I don't know how many days since the petition was submitted to this very board, and it would seem as if there is an impasse, there is a roadblock, there is a single voice roadblock. There is a roadblock that emanates not from the board. I have not heard a person's voice from the board either the night the petition was levied or since reflect on the petition request. There is a single voice, a voice of protection for an appointee that that person has made. That voice at this term, I would label almost an obstinacy, an obstinacy to the numerous signatures, which Lilly has already mentioned, to a composite group of professionals, caring parents, a composite group including unions, a composite group that has submitted a body of evidence that's been well documented, that's empirical, that has been dated, that has been signed, and has been classified as a smear campaign, has been classified as a body of falsehoods. That lone voice stands as an obstacle to the impact of that body of compilation and the people behind it. I was taught by my father that a roadblock really stops everything. A roadblock, he told me very succinctly, means that nothing's getting through if it's an adequate roadblock. I see on the front of that roadblock the word obstinacy. I see that if there's going to be any gain, no matter how hard we blow our horns on this side of the roadblock, and no matter how long we may holler out the windows at the frustration we all feel, until that roadblock is removed, nothing's going to flow. I would add, too, that it takes a great amount of temerity to stand against possibly the greatest compilation of listed aggression against this school district in GRPS history with 840 signatures to motivate it. Think of the gravitas of that, and the amount of temerity to face that and label it with the adjectives we've already brought up at this room. You know, there may be a reason for that temerity. That temerity may be based on a support behind that voice, which granted $67,000 for that person's personal toolage with a manager that had a private group against public schools give a gift and a gratuity in the amount of thousands of dollars to a companion to go to Washington, D.C. and support a person in their review for appointment to the Secretary of Education of this nation. That gratuity had strings behind it. I would call it an influencing peddling.
Mr. Prince, you're tying this up.
That's the fastest three minutes, and I was just getting going. Thank you.
You can finish, I'm sure.
So...
person's personal toolage with a manager that had a private group against public schools give a gift and a gratuity in the amount of thousands of dollars to a companion to go to Washington, D.C. and support a person in their review for appointment to the Secretary of Education of this nation. That gratuity had strings behind it. I would call it an influencing peddling.
Mr. Prince, you're tying this up.
That's the fastest three minutes, and I was just getting going. Thank you.
You can finish, I'm sure. So, you want to call three more names down?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Jane Johnson, Ryan Jeanette, and Natalie...
Ramirez.
Ramirez, yes, thank you.
Ms. Johnson?
I'm up first, okay.
Yeah, go for it.
Thank you for giving the time to speak to you guys today. My name is Jane Johnson, and last time I spoke, I spoke about my son Zachary. He's still not in school, but we're working on it. But this time, I'm speaking on behalf of the Parent Advocacy Council of the County Systems of Change. And it has been a continuous, and I want to call it a fight, a rub against special education the last four years in getting the kids that we serve, which is my kids, with severe and emotional disturbances, to be able to get an adequate education in the special education. We've had one of our students get suspended for felonies assault for an attempt to commit great bodily harm because he threw a milk jug up against the wall, because a security guard grabbed that child and threw his face down on the table. We ended up having to take that parent and having a KEC belt line, and he is now being tutored at home. We've had other kids getting kicked out of school for throwing a pencil on the ground. Part of the Michigan Integrated Behavior and Learning Support Initiative, which you guys said that you guys were following in the last meeting that you guys were in, that you were supposed to be helping our kids with behavior plans, behavior plans are not getting done. And the ones that are getting done are not getting followed. So our kids are continuously getting suspended or expelled out of school, which then we have to have a manifestation hearing, and up below, guess what? It is a part of their IEP and a part of their disability. So continually to do that, our kids are not getting a free and appropriate education, which is mandated by law. You can't continually suspend our kids because you don't like their behavior. Also, inclusion does not mean mainstreaming, okay? Inclusion means to do the best that they can do in the setting that is best adequate for them. Sticking them in a room because there's not enough room in another room is not a free and appropriate education. Just because a kid has emotional disturbance doesn't mean they automatically fit in an IEP classroom, nor do they deserve to go into a Jet Ed classroom where they don't have the supports and the ability in order to calm themselves down. And when they do ask to get calmed down, they're told or grabbed by the teacher, they're not allowed to go outside and sit in the hallway and calm their body. So when behavior plans are not being done, and there's no data to prove it, we go around that rigmarole that says, "Well, we don't have enough data." Well, that's because he's not in enough school. But then when we do have enough data, they still don't manifest or change the behavior plan. That's got to change. That's got to change.
Thank you. Ms. Ramirez? No, I got, did I get the names mixed up here? Sorry.
I think I was third.
Yeah, well, okay. Go ahead.
Hello, President, Superintendent, and members of the board. My name is Natalie Ramirez, and I'm speaking today really more to Superintendent Neal. I always, I have a question for you. I'm really hoping that you can answer it, and if you can't answer it right now, that's okay. If you could answer it within the next 24 hours, I would really appreciate it, or at some point soon. The question that I have is, last school board meeting, I came to speak, but as I was sitting in the seats, I heard you talking about taking the children who were in, out of district, who are busting or into Grand Rapids Public Schools, and taking them and putting them back in their districts. And that's what myself and some other parents, what we gathered from what you were saying, and we were hoping that you could clarify what exactly you meant by that. Are they physically going to go back to their districts, or is just their file, their paperwork going to go back to their districts? I really don't know. I really hope that we can get an answer for that, because that really is a lot. It's a lot on the districts, there's limited resources at the districts, and that's the reason why we're coming to Grand Rapids Public Schools in the first place. The second reason why it's important to know is because it's discriminatory. If you take only special education children, and it's in a school of choice program, and only the special education children have to go back to their districts, that's discrimination based on their disability. And so I wanted to, I'm hoping that you can clarify that, and you can give us an answer for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jeanette?
Thank you, President. My name is Ryan Jeanette. I'm a friend of special education, not just here in Grand Rapids, but all across Michigan. I've been in every conceivable type of classroom, from here in Wyoming to Detroit. It has guided me. My experiences have guided me throughout my life. I was actually touching on what this madam here said earlier. I was actually suspended for three months because my teachers didn't want to understand what I was. Officially, I was suspended for attempting to fight with nobody else being involved. That makes absolutely no sense, and my mom said to that effect. I have many experiences throughout Michigan, throughout my life and throughout the state of Michigan. I have spent three years of my life in culinary arts and hospitality food service management, learning the ins and outs and the trades of it. When you are, when you own a restaurant, when an owner owns a restaurant, you have the manager and you have the assistant manager. If one of those people are flawed in some way, it's up to the owners to get rid of them. It's up to the owners to correct them and to tell them they need to change. We're in that kind of situation here now. 847 people have said, 847 employees have said that the manager and the assistant manager have failed in their jobs in the school system. Now, most people would just sweep that aside, and honestly, that would be very unkind. But we need to bring kindness back into what we think about, and we also need to bring logic back into what we do within our education system. It's kind of the reason why I'm doing now with my life. I'm actually running for Michigan State Senate in the 28th district, because I'm tired of people, rich people, deciding what's best for poor people. I'm tired of being told that things work when they don't. 847 people have said that one person is to blame for all this failure in special education. Maybe you should think that maybe they're making sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jeanette.
Carmen Cita Perdomo, Mary Ann Dykema, and Shante Paul Oliver.
Ms. Perdomo?
Hello, I'm back again. Good evening. The last meeting when we were here, I heard a lot of statistics about why everything was going perfectly well. And then this meeting, I hear about partnerships, about how we're taking care of things, which is great and all, but I would love Mary Freebed to know that when these people are actually in the school system, we're having a problem, and nobody cares. So that's what they should probably get involved to and ask what's really going on. Because it's not fair. We're sitting here telling you things are not working, and you're coming back with all these things of, hey, this is why it is working. But it's like, if you go to the doctor and you tell him, "I have a broken bone," and the doctor says, "No, here's statistics to prove your bone is not broken." Like, "No, it's hanging out of my hand. I can see the broken..." No, we got this great partnership to show you why that bone is not broken. Doctor, it's coming out. It makes about as much sense as a Betsy DeVos interview. That's how much sense it makes. So let's use, you know, I don't have a lot of big words, because I'm not that kind of person, but I do want you guys to know, at least some of you guys, at least one of you guys, you can decide who. The clothes that you wear, and I'm saying at least one of you guys, the car that you drive, the house that you live in, the socks on your feet, a lot of that is paid in part by our kids, by the funding that you get from our kids directed into your pocket to help you do your job that you're not doing. So when I see that, and I see someone, "Oh, look at them. They think they're all fancy. They think they're so much better." And, you know, my kid is not that important, because she'll just take him out of the school and she'll homeschool him, and that's one less problem. That's great and all, but what's separating you and me? What's separating you guys and my child? Nothing. There's really nothing separating you guys and our kid. We are the same, and I would love if you guys got some kind of compassion for our children and stop coming up with all these crazy statistics, these crazy partnerships, these slogans, these buying things left and right, building new schools, outfitting them with all this new technology, when it's not working. And I like to say also that I'm not the only Hispanic person that comes up here and talks, and I'm bilingual, and I'm wondering where the heck are all the Hispanic, Spanish-speaking students of special ed? Are they getting help? Because I see the English-speaking ones are having a hell of a time. So I'm just wondering, if you can't even speak the language, are you getting help? Just throwing it out there, because that could be another discriminatory thing, because you can't have kids that are not being helped just because they don't understand. Because I worked in a school, and I see how easy it is when a parent doesn't push for a kid to fall through the cracks. And if that parent can't speak English, it's going to fall through way easier than someone who can.
Thank you, Ms. Perdomo. We also have Ms. Dykema?
Hi, I'm Mary Ann Dykema, and I'm also back again today. I emailed you all last week, and I wanted to thank the lone board member who did respond. I'm also here about some of the data that was thrown around and statistics at the last board meeting that seemed to impress many board members. And specifically, Mr. Gorman, the fact that he mentioned a 10% increase in high school graduation rates for students with IEPs over the past few years. I had a few questions about this increase. The first one is, what years did this increase take place, and what year did Ms. Lamore begin at GRPS? Question two, what big change did she implement at the high school level in what was likely these students' junior and senior years that accounted for this increase? Is it a possibility that she's taking credit for the positive programming that her predecessors had in place for these students during all of their preschool to late high school years? I'd also like to know if there are fewer or more high school students now with IEPs than in the past. We need to compare data on the number of students with IEPs in high school and their graduation rates, probably going back 12 years. I also heard from a parent that their child was assigned, their child who was not on a high school diploma track but on a certificate track, her son was assigned to the Union Transition Center, and I also found out that there's an Ottawa Hills Transition Center. Most people have never heard of these, and yet students on a certificate track are assigned there. I'd like to know what year these transition centers were created, and what is their mission? How many students with IEPs attend them? The parent that told me that their son attends the Union Transition Center said she was told by a supervisor that he was switched there from Union High School, I mean, he still attends that Union, it's just called a different name, so that his, he's on a certificate track, so that his not getting a high school diploma would not negatively affect the graduation rates. And I want to know about the students there with IEPs. Are they included or excluded in this data? Has that affected this 10% increase? And I guess I'm directly requesting answers to these questions. I also would ask that you not forget the 847 other staff members. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dykema. Ms. Oliver?
My name is Shante Paul Oliver, and I'm coming again before the board. This is my fourth time coming to the board about this situation with my daughter. My daughter is seven years old. She is autistic. She is incontinent. She is not in school. My daughter has not been in school since last year of May 2017 at Dickerson Elementary School. My daughter was assaulted outside on the playground on camera, which was shown on the news. Grand Rapids, GRPS is quite aware of that situation. They did not fire the teacher. She was given a different bid to a different school, while my daughter still sits at home with no schooling. I have tried to communicate with Laura Lamore. She gets back when she gets back. When I came to this last meeting, I get a phone call a few days ago, which was almost two weeks later after I came to speak about her not being in the school, and I was told that she was willing to meet with me for 30 minutes to talk about my daughter. First of all, there should not be a time limit on my child. She's been out of school almost 365 days. I refuse to be told 30 minutes is all she's going to get when it comes to her education and where she's going to be placed, who she's going to be around. She has to have an IEP in place. She is special education student, and she is not being utilized a proper education that she deserves. She is not, the board is not addressing what is going on with my daughter. I feel like every time I come here, when I look at you guys and talk to y'all, I feel like I'm looking at a brick wall. Everything I'm saying is like, it hits and it goes back to me, and as soon as I leave here, I have an unsettling feeling when I leave this building. I look at all of you, doctors and different titles and different things, knowing that my child won't have that opportunity to possibly become something like this one day, due to the fact that she's not in school, due to the fact that we cannot, as adults, come to the table correctly and address the matter at hand. She should not have been assaulted by the teacher. She should have been able to go to any school of choice after that, and the fact that she's not is disturbing. I feel like I have to have legal people in order to just even deal with any of y'all at hand, because it's a tight-knit circle here. And it's just like, I'm not understanding, why is it that this is being accepted and allowed? Maybe because it's not your child. But wait a minute, I thought that you guys were for our children. Y'all are getting money off of our children. It's already bad enough. Children with minority have a hard time, as it is, being in the board education situation. But with a disability on top of that, their chances are slim. And all I'm saying to you today is this, I'm going to keep coming out, I'm going to keep petitioning, I'm going to keep speaking out until the superintendent takes five minutes out of her schedule to sit down and address with a parent like me about their child. I don't want to talk to anyone else but her at this point, and if I have to have a lawyer to do that, I will get my moment to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver. More names?
We have Brenda Behrens, Christina Donaldson, and Mary Jo...
Thompson.
Mary Jo Thompson.
Great. Mike, there's only three. Ms. Behrens?
Good evening, Superintendent Neal, President Faub, and members of the board. So here I sit again in front of the elected Board of Education to ask why. Why are we here again, and no one wants to take responsibility or even talk to us parents about our concerns? I have been sitting with multiple parents, and they speak of abuse and neglect in the classrooms, broken laws, unfederal documents, children being denied services, staff being told they are to keep quiet, they are not to talk to parents about certain changes, children are sitting in poor and unsafe living, building conditions, we are called liars... told they are to keep quiet, they are not to talk to parents about certain changes, children are sitting in poor and unsafe living, building conditions, we are called liars, we are called a smear campaign. When I look up the definition of a smear campaign, it says it's a plan to discredit a public figure by making false or dubious accusations. So how do you call true stories that can be backed up by evidence a smear campaign? Last week, I was again asked why I don't just pull my son out of Grand Rapids Public. The answer is simple. That is the easy way out. I am teaching my son to not only do the right thing, but to continue fighting. He has had excellent teachers, for the most part, at Grand Rapids, and he has made friends. But more than anything, it is my responsibility as a parent to teach my son to be honest and fight for what is right. So I will not pull my son out. I will lead by example, because if I leave, the problems will still be here. So I ask, if Ms. Lomore will not take responsibility, and our superintendent will only try to bully us and call us liars, we will hold every single elected Board of Education member responsible as you are selected by the public to represent us. Instead, more than 847 teachers, 1,100 people total, have been called liars, and the community is called, is told, it's a small group of people that don't like change. Several months ago, while I sat in a meeting with other parents and staff members, I asked Ms. Lomore, so what does the staff think about the changes that are happening in the district? And Ms. Lomore's response to me was, staff don't get opinions, that's why we have administration. That hit me pretty hard. We will no longer sit quietly while you make changes that negatively impact our children, and you don't care. If you cared, you would be listening, and you wouldn't, we would not be here tonight. I say shame on you. You all get a failing grade. If no one will accept responsibility for the lack in care and safety of our children and provide proper facilities and resources for our children, we will vote each and every one of you out.
Thank you, Ms. Behrens. Ms. Johnson, is that?
Thompson.
Thompson, so sorry.
Good time here, it's a lucky number.
I'm sorry.
Hello, I'm here again. We've met so often, I'm thinking we should do coffee at Schuler's. I have a couple of questions regarding the Jeff Butler report, which was quoted often. How do we get a copy of that? Because you're quoting the positives, and I'm sure there's other things in the report that we would like to see. It was paid for by taxpayer money. We'd like to know how we can get that, if it's available. If it's not, how do we get it? It was paid for. Do we have to FOIA everything? That's kind of ridiculous. Last week, you guys said things were being, you guys, I'm sorry, the gentleman that sat here, said things were being fixed and looked upon at the schools. I would just like to know, is there a plan that parents can see? Because I went to the school, the toilets are 16 inches tall, the seat on them is 11 inches. The people using that school are full-grown adults. They're 18 to 26. They're going to fall, they're going to break a hip, because they have special needs, and some of them aren't real steady. And then what happens? They're going to sue GRPS again? That's kind of ridiculous and redundant, because you've been warned about it so often, and so many parents have spoke about that. The board is over O'Neill. She, you guys are in control, she is just the superintendent that you all agreed on. I want to know how many people are going to be responsible when our kids keep coming up with things happening to them? They're home, they're being, like, threatened to be kicked out of a school system. I don't know where all this comes from, I sincerely don't, but we need to have better communication on what we're doing. All you said last week, or two weeks ago, you all heard what we said, and I heard people say, we need to go out and check it out. I dare any of you who have gone out to check out straight school. Any of you. Because it doesn't matter to you. If it mattered to you, you would have gone. When things matter to us, we go. We meet as parents, and this is only part of our group, by the way, we're the most vocal, to get things done, because we need to get things done for our kids. Like I said, the board has until March 23rd, and we'll proceed with Phase Two. The board works for us, we pay your salaries, and I just have a really hard time, because my passion is kids, it's written all over me, anybody I've ever worked with knows that. And as a school board, your passion should be children too, and it doesn't appear to be. If you were passionate about our kids, you would listen to what we all say. Talk to one of the 400, or 847 teachers, just go. Y'all have the petition, y'all have the names. Call them, talk to them, one-on-one. They can tell you what's going on. Because we don't lie, and I highly resent that, being called liar, because I take my integrity very, very much. I mean, I would never call you a liar. If the position presents itself, I guess there's other words to use, I resent being called a liar, because I am not. This is real, this is what's going on in the schools. You can choose to ignore it, please don't. And just on a personal note, I have, yeah.
Ms. Thompson, your time is up.
Yeah, I know, I just have to pay something on personal note. I brought my kids to these sessions a few times, and I have to say, this is bugging me and everyone last, but the eye-rolling at certain people. Either members of your board, eye-rolling at a certain member of the board, or eye-rolling at people on here.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson.
That's just disruptive.
Next, we have Louis Deschain, Laura Figaro, and Ebony White.
Go ahead, Mr. Deschain. Time has started, Mr. Deschain. Speak or not speak.
Tess, all right, I guess it works. Well, obviously, you guys don't follow your own rules. I'm not supposed to have to speak, or my time doesn't start till I start speaking, so we see how y'all work. Let's see here. All right, so I moved up here from Rock Island, Illinois, 1987, and my first educational experience up here in Grand Rapids was Grand Rapids Public Schools. And I was in fifth grade. Mr. Lang was my fifth-grade teacher, and the white boy that I am, I was like, all right, my first Asian teacher. And I walk into the classroom, and to my surprise, it was, he was a person of color. And so, you know, that just goes to show kind of what we're brought up thinking. But anyhow, one thing that Mr. Lang did teach me, and I really appreciate what he taught me, it was the first day of school, stood up to say the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm not sure why you guys even say the Pledge of Allegiance, I don't know if you really believe in liberty and justice for all. But he was like, Mr. Deschain, what are you doing? I'm like, hmm, well, aren't we going to say the Pledge of Allegiance? He said, no, we don't say the Pledge of Allegiance in this class. And I wish I just could have a conversation with him right now, because that is just thought-provoking, I didn't understand it at the time, but I really appreciate that. Now, Ms. Neal, you are stated as saying in the MLive article, the one after your press conference, that Laura Lomore is not going anywhere, and she's just doing what you want her to do. Therefore, really, you're taking all the blame upon yourself, and you really should be the target of the dismissal, you know, out the door, out the door, Lomore. But then I'm hearing, well, all the board of directors, or whatever you call yourselves, choose a superintendent. So now you're all targets, and the more targets I have, the better, so this is going How did the walkout go? Because I heard it was a walk-in, I mean, you guys are controlling freedom of speech, the First Amendment. So did you guys really teach the First Amendment to your students, to the students?
Mr. Deschain, your time is up.
Whoa. Like Jack says, that was pretty quick. Did anybody time that? Thank you.
Ms. Figaro?
I'm just going to keep it short and sweet today. I actually am very glad that Ms. Lewis is here. You weren't here at the last board meeting, and I am a Kenwood Hills alumni. I wondered. I want to implore the board members to think about everything that has been presented to you. You know this is a problem. It's obvious. The groups of parents coming here, week after week, should tell you something. I know several people in the group have children with cognitive disorders. Do you, any of you realize how difficult it is to get childcare, or someone to look after your kids, and you're coming here to talk to people who seem silent on something that is a reality for all of us in our daily? I wish I could go home and not worry about me having to pay my daughter's tutoring bill, because she's not getting the help from the school, so I have to fork the money out of my own pocket, because dyslexia does not remediate itself. And you all have no idea how many people come up to me. I don't live in the district, I made this choice. I live in Kenwood Hills, which is an amazing district, but I wanted my daughter at GRPS because I thought that it provided her better opportunities. And there are people in other districts that have contacted me, saying, I'm in Granville, what's going on with GRPS? This is news across the board, across West Michigan. I have friends in Detroit with autistic kids that are following what GRPS is doing in regards to special education. And do you guys want that reputation? Honestly? Is that a reputation that GRPS wants? We're not building a house and bringing a wish list to the builder of light fixtures and appliances that we want in it. We are asking for fundamental education rights for our kids. It's that simple. And the silence that you guys have shown is deafening.
Thank you. Ms. White?
I don't know if it's, okay. So I'm going to start off by saying, first off, I do believe all of you guys sincerely care. If not, you wouldn't be on a school board. Like, the nature of the work, you must care about the students. So, starting with that point, I want to say that statistics don't matter. When the chances of having a child, for example, with Down Syndrome is one out of 360 roughly, then when you have the child with Down Syndrome, you don't care about the other 300 and something that didn't. You care about your child. And so, as someone whose brother has Down Syndrome, I want to just tell you about my experience and what I believe, the message that gets sent when we choose to fund some kids over others and choose to value some kids over others. We are first telling children that your, all of your value gets based down into your standardized test score, your graduation rates, things that can be measured somehow. We don't tell them that their value gets measured on their character, or on their ability to love, or show compassion, or show kindness. We don't tell them that you brighten my day when you smile at me. No, we tell them that, sorry, you're nothing but a number, when we tell them that it's okay to defund certain programs, because those kids don't matter to us. That's what we're telling other children. So it's affecting all kids, not just some, because we send a message, whether we mean to or not. And then, the other thing is, you don't take into account how, regardless of graduation rates, regardless of standardized test scores, or how it affects the school overall, there is a profound effect when a child learns compassion, because they have a friend who's autistic, or they have a friend who's dyslexic. They learn how to accept differences. I've seen my brother interact with students, and I've seen them go from being the mean girl at school to being as sweet as can be, because they recognize that he can teach them something different. He teaches them how to love, how to be patient, how to be kind. He's taught me this. I would not be the person I am if I didn't have him as my brother. So I just want to reiterate that when you make decisions to not care about all of the students equally, you're also sending the message to all the children that your only value to us is as a number. And that is not a message I think anyone wants to send to any child. But I'm just saying that I think, I think the best thing we could do is to show children by example. The best thing you can do is to put your values on trial and say, do we think that our moral values are worth something in this day and age? When we have a president who actively mocks people with disabilities, do we want to put our values on trial and say, we are going to spend the money and say, teach every child that every person is valued, and that they all have something to contribute to society, regardless of their statistic? And I believe that you all really care. You wouldn't be listening to all of our complaints and being here today if you didn't.
Thank you, Ms. White.
Donaldson.
Donaldson.
We're out of cards? Yeah, she wasn't, she wasn't present for her work.
Ms. White?
Good evening. That articulate young lady that just spoke was my daughter. I'm not just saying this to brag, but I want you to know that she just graduated from Harvard, and she will give all the credit to have made it, because she saw the journey that her brother took, and it made her a better person. Our children do contribute, and they matter. And I hope that, I don't know, and I know you can't respond to me, but I don't know if any of you have a child with special needs, and you know that you, that you have any understanding to the journey that we go through, because it is not an easy journey. So, I heard when, when Dr. O'Neill mentioned the metrics, that the school, GRPS, was being judged based on the number of diplomas. I'm here to say that I will help make those changes. And if we can't make those changes, if GRPS is not the place for our children, then let's, let's begin negotiations with KISD. Maybe that, it can't be worse than what it is for our children here, right now, at GRPS. So I hope that, instead of treating our children as second-class citizens, or third-class citizens, or I refer to them as, being referred as yesterday's garbage, then let's begin those negotiations, so our children can be treated with humanity and some respect, please.
Thank you. Ms. Donaldson?
Good evening, everyone. Just wanted to come in support, again, of the families that are here, and our children that are being served, or lack thereof, and just kind of wanted to reiterate that we continue to come here, because we continue to believe in the fight, and we believe in our children. And as I'm sure you guys are here for a reason and purpose too. We do recognize that change starts from the top, so we are here advocating that some change happens, and that it happens within the administration, because that's what's kind of setting the tone for the teachers and the staff and the schools, and making sure that all of their needs are being met, that our students' needs are being met, and that the teachers and staff have the proper tools that they need to actually meet the needs that are written within our IEPs. I know, for instance, my son had, he's nonverbal, and he needs a communication device to communicate. And so that was written in his IEP, and we did not have that for six months. So that means that my son can't really communicate with anyone for six months, because he doesn't have the proper tools that he needs, nor did the teacher have the proper training to use his communication device. So, you know, that's going back home and having to retrain and relearn. And there have been some very great teachers. I've had some good experience with GRPS, due to the teachers that do care. But again, the change starts from the top. So we are asking that you guys not only respond to the many attempts that we have come here to, to get feedback, or to get some, to see some real change, but we do need some type of response. but we do need some type of response from the board. And not just, Teresa, we appreciate your response, but it is also your responsibility and accountability to hold the administration of this school board accountable to meet the needs of all of our kids, and that's not being done. And so we're here, I'm here to support the parents and support the staff and the teachers that are not getting the proper supports to meet the needs of our kids, so.
Thank you, Ms. Donaldson. Is that it?
That's it.
Alright, thank you. Superintendent's comments? No comment, Dr. Flor. Reverend Matthias?
Yes, again, it's sobering to hear our families come out.
Dr. Flores?
Again, I think that, that certainly we are a caring board. There is a role to play as board members. The public does best by exercising its opportunity to, to assemble peacefully and to present their concerns. And I, for one, appreciate that.
No comment.
I guess I sort of echo Reverend Matthias's concerns that it is to some degree sobering. But I will restate that I do have every confidence in my colleagues here on this board as well as the superintendent to do what's right for the district and what's right for all children in the district, including those belonging to the families in this room. It's a very complex issue. And I also will echo the commentary by Dr. Flores. I wholeheartedly support and people's right to advocate for what they believe is, is right. Whether, in this particular case, I won't say it's about agree or disagree, but regardless of my personal perspective to agree or not, people do have the right to advocate for what they think is right, particularly when it comes to probably the most precious beings that you, that you know. So I would never dissuade you from doing so. I would ask that a certain degree of respect be given and recognize that it is a very complex issue. And I will actually give a particular shout-out to Ms. White for recognizing that the people on this board do care. Definitely not in it for the money, which is nonexistent. And I guess I would also sort of offer a counter to evidence that we don't care and that there has been a visit to a straight school the day after that meeting as well. So that was a high priority, to say the least. And frankly, I guess I would just ask that there be some, just as there's passion on the other side of the table, there's passion on this side of the table. And I think, you know, really, communication is the way to bring those passions together to, to have some productive and positive results.
Thank you. Ms. Grant?
I echo the sentiments of my, of my colleagues.
The Slade?
Yes, I want to thank you very much for coming and speaking up. Very much appreciate it, and you are being heard.
Ms. Latas?
Yes, you are being heard. And I'm glad that you came and we are listening and we do care. We care a great deal. I also wanted to say something about something good that happened this last week. Good in a way. I, as you all know, I have two granddaughters in Grand Rapids Public Schools and one is at the museum school and one's at Aberdeen. And they did have the walkout. And it was done at Aberdeen Elementary, where my little girl is. They had an hour, well, I don't even think it was an hour. I think it was about 20 minutes in the gym where they talked about all kinds of safety. You know, just to be safe in school and to say things, to stick up for other people and so on. And my older granddaughter, who goes to museum school, they had the kids. And when I heard about this and I was sharing this with one of the other parents, it was very touching because I was not there to see this, but somebody relayed it to me, that all the kids marched out as if they were leaving the buildings. And they all marched down the stairs. They didn't go outside because you don't go outside at museums, it's kind of dangerous traffic-wise. But they all walked down all the stairs with their heads down, hanging on to the front of another student in front of them. And I, I think that was a very profound lesson, if not for the kids, certainly for the parents and people who saw it. But, you know, we didn't, you know, as a school, we did not ignore that. We did not ignore that. And I, I am very glad we took part in that. So I, I thank you Superintendent Neal for arranging to do it in such a good way.
Because I just want to add on Ms. Lewis's comments, and I'm looking to our student reps. So it just was really powerful week for me to see the student voice and the student leadership on the walkout, both at City and the museum school. I heard a very powerful testimony, and I know many of the other schools as well. I love seeing both of you here experiencing the open meetings and public comment. I think it's a very, very essential part of a democratic process and glad to see you here later than usual, experiencing it all. And I also want to mention the, the time spent at the Cesar Chavez March. You had mentioned the students there. It was great to celebrate Cesar's legacy. It was great to see strong participation, our superintendent there and many of the colleagues. And it was a really beautiful, beautiful gathering afterwards with three young men who have DACA status, speaking very powerfully. So it was a good week for student voice, so. Meeting adjourned.